There ain't movement on here, Dave.
Penguin.
This is it?
That sound like a commercial.
The December 16th, 2019 City of Andalia Council meeting is now called to order. The first thing on our agenda will be a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, you've had a long list of minutes, beginning with the special council meeting minutes of October the 24th, the council budget workshop minutes of November the 11th, this council study session minutes of November the 18th, the council meeting minutes of November the 18th, the council study session minutes of December the 2nd, and the council meeting minutes of December the 2nd. In that grouping, are there any corrections or revisions that should be made? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. We have no, oh yes we do, we have a proclamation tonight for our council member David Gerhardt, so I'm asking David, our councilman David Gerhardt, and the rest of council to please come down in front. This is kind of always hard to do because we just have this one little mic that really, it does travel a little bit, but don't be shy, you can come on up, come on up. David, this gives me great pleasure as the last time to give a proclamation, and it's by the authority vested in me that tomorrow, December the 17th, Tuesday, we are naming Councilman David Gerhardt Day in the City of Andalia. And being a little bit different and everything, I thought that instead of waiting to the very end and then going back and hashing it out, let's just all talk right now. And so I've asked each of the council members if they want to say something to you constructive. I used the word constructive, I didn't say nice, but certainly they should do that. So I think we can move this mic around so that anybody that wants to begin, David?
I hate going first, but I can use all my material. What I'd like to say, Dave, is over the last, whatever, 16, 17 years, you've become a friend, a respected councilman, you come off very easygoing, but you've never been anybody's fool, and you always, in your comments, I felt that you gave your best effort and you said what you wanted to say from your heart and for no other reason. And I respect that immensely, and we're gonna all, I'm gonna miss you, and I wish you the best of luck going forward. Thanks, David.
Hi Bob.
Dave, I can remember when I got first elected on council eight years ago, I really didn't know you, but since then, I've gotten through council meetings for you to be one of my best friends. You're a man of high integrity. I can't say in council meetings, you were a man of few words, which is good because we generally didn't listen to you anyway. But, no, you were a big contributor, and thank you for leading the city for the last 17, 18 years, and I very much appreciate it, thank you.
We all had a chance to sit around last two weeks ago, which we used to do a lot, not talking city business, but just getting to know each other, so it's been a long time, you've been with us for 17 years, so we will miss you, even though you think we won't. Do appreciate all the debating back and forth, that's very necessary in a council like this, it's very healthy, but everybody's always maintained the best relationships, I think, with each other, so we will miss you and I appreciate all the time you've put in.
David, I've only worked with you for four years, but I can say that you honestly have Van Dalia's best interests at heart, you really love this community. I didn't know you very well coming into this, but as some of the others have mentioned, I would definitely call you my friend now. I mean, you're a great individual, and I appreciate the thought and wisdom of some of the comments and things that you bring to the table when you have, when we have issues on the table, and I mean, you really have a good perspective on things that, you know, sometimes some of us don't think of, and, you know, it's helped me as a council member learn this role a lot better because there's a lot, you need a lot of different people's perspectives to get a good, good solid answer on a lot of this, and I really appreciate you, Dave, thanks.
It's hard going first and it's hard going last. Dave, it's great to call you friend, and first and foremost, you've always had the citizenry of Van Dalia first and foremost, and I think that's a great quality that really shined through. And when it came time to talk about issues or things, you know, you put your opinion right out there, and you didn't care one way or the other how it looked or how it said, I mean, kind of flowery sometimes and, you know, off color, and, you know, appreciate it, you know, and it made us think and kind of sit up and go and pause and like, huh, you do have a good point there. So for that, I think you've made us be better as well, so it's gonna be hard without you.
Oh, Dave, I know, I have appreciated you, and I don't think that sometimes you realize how much I do, because each of these council members, I looked upon them as having some expertise in a field, and yours was with finance. So when it came to the budget, and I'm sorry you weren't there this last time, and I understood, but still, it was so, so important for you to put your input in because it was something that most of us didn't think about at the time, but we could then develop off of that. So your expertise in that field is just exemplary, so. You know that we feel the best for you, you're going to, you're still gonna be here in Van Dalia, we're still gonna see you, aren't you gonna be on another committee? You're gonna ask?
We're talking with Connie to stay on the Van Dalia Development.
Right, right, because service is part of you, and you love Van Dalia, and we love you too, and just as a little token of our gratitude, we'd like to give you this. I'm not gonna read your proclamation because I think that all of us here have said everything that's on here, and maybe a little bit more personal than this, but believe me, this is a beautiful proclamation.
It is, it's amazing, and I never thought I'd get a day. Unless I was dead. No, it's been great working with everybody, and I do think we have a great group of people, we have great people coming in, and Van Dalia is a great city, and the community and the people are what it's all about, so it's been great, I'm glad to be done, I've kind of burned out a little bit at the end, but it was a great, great opportunity. Think my mom, who was an Inglewood council member for 30 or 40 years, would have been happy, and it's just time for me to go, but the city will be very good hands moving forward, so, thank you very much. Alright guys, there's a big party tomorrow, all day, you can do whatever you want. Thanks.
Okay, going back to our agenda, we have no public hearings this evening, and this brings us to comments from interested citizens, so if there's anybody in our audience who would like to make comment, would you please come up to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment.
Yeah, Will said that he'll follow me. Joe Durant Check, 1328 Corner Strive, and since you didn't want to read a proclamation, I'll read one. And you can make pretend that these are all Historical Society members, they were supposed to be here, but due to voicemails and inclement weather, they decided they were gonna stay home. Whereas, the village of Andalia was founded August 4th, 1838, incorporated February 7th, or, I'm sorry, 1838, incorporated February, and I'm with the Historical Society, February 7th, 1848, and became a charter city of the state of Ohio, January 2nd, 1960, and whereas, I like when you would do this, whereas the first mayor of the village of Andalia was its founder Benjamin Wellham, elected March 22nd, 1848, and whereas the first mayor of the city of Andalia, chosen by the city council, January 2nd, 1960, was Ben G. Armstrong, and whereas the first mayor of the city of Andalia, elected by the citizens of Andalia, November 3rd, 1987, was Joy A. Clark, and whereas Arlene J. Setser served on the Andalia City Council from 1982 to 2000, serving as vice mayor from 1985 to 1988, and from 1995 to 2000, whereas Arlene J. Setser served from 2001 to 2008 as state representative for the 36th House District and the 124th to 127th General Assemblies, I'm getting close, whereas Arlene J. Setser served as the 12th mayor of the city of Andalia from 2012 to 2019, and was recipient of the 2018 Marvin Link Distinguished Service Award, and whereas the city of Andalia Commemorative Tree Program provides individuals, groups, clubs, organizations with the opportunity to enhance the city with trees that honor people, ideas, and special events. Now therefore, we members of the Historical Society of Andalia Butler do hereby recognize, our mayor, Arlene J. Setser, with a commemorative tree of her choice to be planted at the city park, art park, or the Historical Society in her honor and for all her service.
Thank you so very, very much. Do I have to plant it myself?
They just give you a shovel.
The city does it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Will Roberts, Van Dalia Butler Chamber of Commerce, and I have some guests with me this evening, I'd like to call them up as well, our chairman of the board, Mr. Mike Tyne, past chairman, Mr. John Wheeler, and board member, Amy Ross, as well as our representative from the city, Mr. John Cruzey, if you don't mind, come on down, sir. So on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we would like to, although not through proclamation, recognize Mayor Arlene Setser, not only for her duties here on council, but her service time to the community, so just a couple of things that we have here to recognize, starting back in the days as a teacher, back in 1967, you know, starting your time there at Butler, and then of course, working on city council, your time as an Ohio House Rep, and then your time here as city manager, 52 years. Or, excuse me, sorry, mayor. So 52 years of service to the community, plus much more than what this plaque recognizes, but this is for the Chamber, our first opportunity to present a lifetime achievement award, so we are doing that today on behalf of our mayor, Arlene Setser, and her service to the community.
Thank you so very much. Thank you, thank you. Unreal, and I just want to get your newsletter.
I'll make sure that's taken care of.
We were just really happy our dates lined up.
You'll get the newsletter, I promise.
Yeah, I know, talked to you about it already, thank you so, so very much, that's very nice, it's beautiful, both of them are just beautiful, so. Anyone else?
Well, it's hard to follow that up, but I am just inviting the community, a few members have started the Christmas at the crossroads, and on all things Van Dalia, it is inviting anybody that has decorated their home to register it with us, and then, we will put the address out there, and you can just basically make a map, and there's already a few addresses that have done that so that we can really just enjoy all the hard work that citizens have put together, and enjoy the beautiful lights that they have done.
Thank you, but Amber, would you please give us your name and address for our records? I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay, sorry. Amber Avalotis Weaver, 1031 Bailey Avenue.
And that is such a wonderful idea, especially since we no longer have the newspaper and everything to, because there are, if you've been through the city, driving around, I just can't believe some of the decorations are beautiful, and I think that some of the neighborhoods have maybe had a contest or something because of the way in which it's door after door after door after door with all the lights and decorations, so thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, let's continue on with our agenda here, with the city managers' report, and we have an information item, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor, just want to let everybody know that city offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 24th, and Wednesday, December 25th, in observance of the Christmas holiday. City offices will also be closed on Wednesday, January 1, 2020, in observance of the New Year's holiday. Our first council meeting of next year will be Monday, January 6. The rec center will be open on Christmas Eve from 7:00 a.m. until noon, limited areas open. On Christmas Day, the rec center will be closed. On New Year's Eve, again, the rec center will be open from 6:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., and then the rec center will be closed on New Year's Day.
Thank you very much. There are no action items, nor are there any old business items, and that brings us to our first resolution for this evening, and that's Resolution 19-R-59, by title only, Mr. McDonald?
A resolution approving the New Life Worship Center plat.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So the applicant is requesting the plat of 11.791 acres, located on the south side of Benchwood Road, between Town Center Drive and Commerce Center Drive. The proposed plat would create one 0.919 acre lot that has frontage on Benchwood Road, just west of the former IHOP site, and one 10.873 acre lot that includes the New Life Worship Center. Additionally, 0.169 acres will be dedicated as public right-of-way on Benchwood Road. So the planning commission did review this request at its November 12 meeting, they voted 5-0 to recommend approval, provided that the accompanying rezoning request for the Benchwood Road property is approved by council, and that's the next item on your agenda.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 19-R-59 as presented.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilman Farce, second by Councilman Lewis, that we do approve the resolution approving the New Life Worship Center plat. Any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt? Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have no ordinances in their first reading this evening, and so that takes us to ordinances in their second reading, and the first one is 19-31, Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance rezoning 7.73 acres of property, commonly known as part of 3320 Benchwood Road, from residential single-family 1 to gateway business, and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So the applicant is requesting to rezone 7.73 acres at 3320 Benchwood Road from residential single-family 1 to gateway business. This rezoning would place all of the New Life Worship Center's property under the same general business zoning classification. The planning commission reviewed this request at its November 12 meeting, they voted 5-0 to recommend approval, provided that the accompanying plat for this property is approved, again, and that's the resolution council just passed.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I will open up a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, would you please come forward, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I move that we approve ordinance 19-31 in its second reading?
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Herbst, second by Councilman Blakesley, that we do approve ordinance 19-31 in its second reading. Any kind of comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Emergency ordinance number 19-32, Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Van Dalia, Montgomery County, Ohio, during the calendar year ending December 31, 2019, and amending ordinance 1824 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. And so this ordinance would amend 2019 appropriations as follows, in the general fund, an additional $163,500, and in the computer legal research fund, an additional $40,000.
Thank you. Once again, since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open up a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to our podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 19-32 as an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhardt, second by Councilman Blakesley, that we do approve ordinance 19-32 as an emergency. Comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Emergency ordinance- Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Emergency ordinance 19-33. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance authorizing a bonus to the city manager and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Oh, it's a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve ordinance 19-33 as an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilman Gerhardt, that we take ordinance 19-33 as an emergency. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
No, and the motion carries 6 to 1. Emergency ordinance 19-34. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the Finance Director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzy?
Thank you, Your Honor. So this ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to weed cutting, stormwater, trash collection, water, and sewer.
Thank you. Once again, since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open up a public hearing. So if there's anyone in our audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 19-34 as an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhardt, second by Vice Mayor Herbs, that we approve an emergency ordinance 19-34. Are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have some reports from boards and commissions, and that would be the Board of Zoning Appeal minutes of November the 13th, and the Planning Commission minutes of November the 12th. Are there any comments about those? Seeing none. I just have a little comment. I am so thankful to the Van Dalia community for providing me the opportunity to serve, as has been already mentioned, as a councilperson, vice mayor, state rep, and mayor. I have been able to work with the greatest group of people, no matter what council members were on the dais here. And it's been a great experience. I love service to the community. I love this community. And I, again, just thank all of you for the support that you not only have given me, but to our city. We are a unique group of people. You heard it when we were talking to Councilman Gerhardt. And I go around throughout the county, and we are known as a professional city council. And I think that it reflects, and I think that you know that we, as a council, are here to serve and do the very best that we possibly can. So with that, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays. We are adjourned.
And she's a...
That was good.
Absolutely. That was rude.
Well, you know, I was thinking.
Oh, that was good. Okay. Where are we, baking coffee? That's very pretty. Hey, I know, I saw you.
I saw it, I was like, wow.
At Jerry. Different time. I go on Tuesday, I train with Mike on Tuesday and Thursday at eight. And on Monday at four, I deal with Will in boxing.
Well, you know, this makes it official.
And Friday at ten.
Okay.
If you want to go up there, you tell me a time, I'll go with it.
Paging Candace, paging Candace.
Yeah, I'm typically in the back. How you doing? I'm always here.
I appreciate you stepping down. Do you have a date for the...
Honor awards. February 18.
I saw that, my email there.
I guess we're up. Great to meet you.
This is, this is kind of cool.
They all go this quick.
You gotta go to the workshop. The workshop is... The workshop is where you get to want to show people. Poor Rob. I really do want to show that lady when she was beating her up about my storm drain. Yeah, I mean, I just, I was just sitting there, and sitting there, and then I started going like, setup, setup, and I sort of said, but I didn't. Oh, God. Wow. Yeah.
Rabbit mosquitoes. I don't want the rabbit mosquito.
Yes, she was gonna get the EPA after you because you were making a rabbit mosquito, not parrot, a rabbit mosquito breeding ground.
Well, I fed the mosquito.
It was the funniest. I mean, it's literally, they might as well have just been fixing it to the city because it was snowing.
We're gonna spend 70 grand to fix it.
Well, it would have been more than that. It would have had to rain it into the whole street. Not just her yard, her whole street.
We're gonna run it down the street. Yeah, we're doing it.
In an area where there was no downhill to any other ground. She was the downhill.
We can run hers over to the church.
Where are the waters coming from? Okay, I'm leaving now.
It's even worse. Rob's got it designed. It matters how low the storms are. The line's low enough.
Not this year at least, maybe next year.
Eric, thanks for coming.
Yeah, no problem. I enjoy it. I know, we were waiting for that. We use that term loosely. Take everything up here you want. You earned it.
It was good to see you too. I'm telling you that. Tell them all about it. Merry Christmas. Everybody good? Families good?
I think we are.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.